Good evening. I'd like to call the special meeting of the City Council, January 21, 2009, to order. Would Counselor Connery please lead us in a salute to the flag?
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
President Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Boebay.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Connery.
Here.
Counselor DiMartino.
Counselor DiNatali.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Dadd.
Here.
Counselor Starr.
Here.
Counselor James.
Here.
Warrant for a special meeting of the City Council. A special meeting of the City Council will be held on Wednesday, January 21, 2009, at 4:00 p.m., Fitchburg High School Auditorium, Anheuser Farm Road, Fitchburg, Massachusetts, 01420. The agenda will consist of the following: Public forum regarding the December 2008 ice storm. At a public forum for the City Council, all residents are allowed to come forward and speak for a few minutes regarding the agenda item. Tonight, we only have one item on the agenda; that is, the ice storm of 2008. So, anybody can come forward. We ask that you first sit with the city clerk and write your name and address for the record, then stand at the podium, and then address the council. There will not be debate. Counselors, if they have a question for someone who spoke, can get up and ask for some clarification, ask for you to be more specific about something. If counselors wish to speak, to address us, they will go to the podium, just like any other resident, and address us as a resident of the City of Fitchburg. We hope that we'll be orderly. We hope that folks will come down at their leisure, sign up, stand up, and let us know what you have to say. We're here to gather information regarding all aspects of the ice storm: our preparedness, our response, other people's responses, and the circumstances that you individually had, so that we can use that as we go forward, whether we're going to state agencies to discuss what happened, whether we're sitting down as a city and determining with our department heads how we can better serve the residents of Fitchburg in the event that we have something occur again. So, we're off and running, and if some would like to step forward?
How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
If we could wait just one minute, I aired. We do have one counselor, Counselor Joseph, who would like to speak from the podium before we start. So, if he could go first, then the residents in line. So, people don't have to stand there the whole time. If you'd like to sort of just figure out who's in line in front of you, you can take seats and then get back up when it's your opportunity.
First off, I just want to say, if you can hear me, that this meeting in no way, shape, or form should be any substitute for the meeting that's supposed to take place next Tuesday, 4:00 at Memorial Middle School. That is the meeting that everybody needs to attend to and give their testimony to the DPU. People that are being recorded here this evening that can't make it next week, that's part of the testimony that the City Council will bring forward. But it's very imperative that if you have a story to tell, that you need to make sure that you tell that story to the DPU next week. As far as why I'm here, I have a petition from the citizens of Massachusetts. Description of history: Unitil failure to adequately assess, perform, and repair services to customers during a recent weather crisis and state of emergency where a health and safety risk deemed unacceptable. Their mismanagement and failure to properly manage and hold time of the essence in cold temperatures put many customers at risk. This is a petition that we, the undersigned, call on our officials to remove Unitil as our current service provider. The petitions that I have is not a representation of myself or the City Council. It's a representation of the 750 people that I have hard copy signatures on, the 4,000 people that we have online petition signers on, and the additional 1,000 or 2,000 signatures that we have from Lunenburg, Townsend, Ashby, the other cities and towns that are in the same predicament that the City of Fitchburg is. These are real people. These signatures were collected in less than two hours, three hours, standing out in the cold on a Sunday morning, and every one of these signatures came with a story. They're very similar to the stories that you're going to hear this afternoon, but the majority of these people were five days without power, seven days without power, 12 days without power. They're elderly, they have kids, they have infants. Every one of these signatures that went on this, these people came out because there was a story behind their signatures. And all they want is for the City of Fitchburg to hear their stories, Unitil to hear their stories, and the Department of Public Utilities to hear their stories and understand that what happened from December 12 until Christmas Eve was unacceptable for the citizens of Fitchburg. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Bruno. I live at 28 Hollywood Street in Fitchburg. Unlike some of these other people who were out for 10, 12 days, I was only out for six days. However, my husband is very much disabled. He has a defibrillator. He's on oxygen most of the time. It was extremely difficult knowing what to do. Now, I don't want to say that the city wasn't totally prepared, but frankly, gentlemen, you weren't prepared. I expected the emergency management team to be able to give me a hand. I never got a phone call till Tuesday. Tuesday would have been too late, had I not called a couple of other people and said, "What do I do? Where do I go? He's on Coumadin. I can't have him freezing in the house." So, we found shelter for the days that we had to find shelter. And then, finally, we were able to find a generator. My suggestion would be something small like this. This was handed out last year. Most of you probably have them. I think they were given out by the Golden Living Center. Something like this for my house that I could -- this fits on my refrigerator. With information that I could have used, whom do I call? The emergency management number didn't come to me till Tuesday. And by the way, the only reason I ever got that is because my husband insists we have one of the old-fashioned phones that doesn't require electricity. So, we got that call on Tuesday. That also gave me the emergency number for Unitil. Didn't do any good. That brings up another issue. People who are disabled are only allowed to register every year with Unitil as being disabled. You guys will have to figure out whether that's a state law. I don't know what the deal is. That needs to be changed. If someone has a debilitating disorder, a debilitating disease, which is going to last forever until they die, they need to be able to register once with the utilities company. And God help us, I hope it's not going to be Unitil. Then, they won't have to keep remembering to do it every year. Next. Bullhorns are wonderful. They work. Nobody came to my neighborhood with a bullhorn to say, "This is the number you need to call." Is that unusual? Is that done in other communities? Yes, it is. When there was a big issue in one of the communities in Maine, and I can't tell you who it was that did it, but they went from neighborhood to neighborhood with bullhorns saying, "Call this number if you need this. Call this number if you need that." That's a quick, easy, cheap solution. Oh, yeah. Speaking of cheap, there was one other issue. Tuesday, we happened to get a Fitchburg Sentinel, the Tuesday right after the storm. First thing I saw on the right-hand side of the page, and I don't think that the Sentinel misquoted it, it said that Mayor Lisa said that we had to tough it out. Let me tell you something, Mayor Lisa. The woman next door to me is 99 years old. It is inappropriate for a young person to tell an elderly person, "You have to tough it out." Actually, they didn't know where to go to get help. They couldn't take her to a shelter. It wouldn't have worked. Fortunately, one of my neighbors had heat because they had a gas insert in their fireplace, and they took her in. You know? Now, about Unitil, I think the rage that you see from all of us is years in coming. I'm 67 years old. With the exception of 10 years, I've lived in Fitchburg all my life. I have always overpaid. Nobody ever listened. Our rates are the highest ever. Nobody listened. And now, suddenly, we find out that not only are we paying the highest rates, but they aren't prepared. Seven crews? In the old days, they used to have 47 ready to go. Seven crews for a city of this size? Totally unacceptable. If I ever went to my classroom, as unprepared as Unitil was, I would have been fired. By the way, if you need donations for bullhorns or to get this program started, let me know. Oh, yeah. This could also print, generate a safety. I want to especially thank the fire department of the City of Fitchburg. I said I purchased a generator. We did. We had it professionally installed. Unbeknownst to us, we had placed it too close to the house. All of a sudden, 8:30 Wednesday night, my CO detector went off. I immediately called the number that I had gotten Tuesday on the phone, and I got a really nice fireman who started asking me questions and said, "We'll be there in five minutes." Actually, I think it was less than that. They didn't make fun of us. You know, here we are, elderly people being stupid about the generator. They were very nice, explained to us why it had happened. It was too close to the house. When the wind shifted at night, we ended up with the CO all in the house. We would have been dead, except for the fact that they were there quickly. And thank them for that. Finally, it's very difficult to ask you, the council, for something more. I know the city's in a mess. I understand that. I read the paper. But why wasn't the emergency management team ready? Do you know that I'm so stupid that I honest-to-God thought, after the tragedy in New York, when the emergency management teams were put together, do you know I honestly thought that it was going to work? That I could be safe? That I had a city I could rely on? I'm sorry, gentlemen. I'm very disappointed, not only with Unitil, but with my city.
Before I speak, Mayor Wong, I noticed you were on the list prior to me. Would you like to speak first?
Thanks. I appreciate that.
I first want to thank you for holding this hearing in the first place. I think that the legislative leadership has been phenomenal in the city of the past year, and I certainly have enjoyed working with this council. I've enjoyed working with you in the council chambers. I enjoyed working with you on the day-to-day operations in the Emergency Operations Center, where each and every one of you came into the Emergency Operations Center to get yourselves informed and to ask what you could do to help. And I appreciate you going out there and helping get that information, and many of you serving as those bullhorns, going door-to-door for me, letting me know where the vulnerable populations were, so that we had all the information that we could back in the EOC and allocate our resources as effectively as we could. I just want to say a few things. And I want to say, first and foremost, that I am here to listen. And with the information that I received today and the information that I've received from numerous phone calls and emails, letters, and people stopping by my office regarding this and every issue, these are all being taken in, and these are all going to be very useful in terms of what direction the city goes from here. I know that we can do things better, and I know that we have faced a series of challenges. And I hope that nobody ever misinterpreted anything that I say as people need to tough it out. I think if I have said anything, it's that people here are tough. People here have persevered through a lot, and there is a lot on our plate right now. And the information that we take today is going to help us better allocate our resources. These are the tax dollars that we are stewards of. And those tax dollars are part of a public conversation in terms of public safety, quality of life, emergency management, a number of things that the city is obligated and should be, continue to be obligated to do. And I first have to say that our priority has and always will be the protection of life. And during the ice storm incident, because of all of your help, not just the City Council, but also citizens, and the great work of our city departments, every city department, the ones that you don't see like information technology, to the ones that you do see like fire and DBW and police, because of the hard work that they did with very few resources in such a quick amount of time, because there are emergency management plans in place, because those emergency management plans were put in place immediately, no lives were lost. And for that, I am grateful for. That was a primary task which we set out during the ice storm incident, not knowing how long it was going to last, getting various bits of information that had proven to be inaccurate. But our goal remained the same, and that was to protect life. Now, as we look for input from the community to make sure that we make the changes that we need to do, that we can do things better, we're going to continue to make sure that those emergency management plans are continuously updated, that our staff is continually trained, and that we are going to continue to hold the protection of life of our citizens as our top priority. Thank you.
My name's Bob Botwell, Robert Botwell. A lot of yous know me. A lot of yous heard from me. To start with, I am disabled, okay? I have a breathing machine that I use that needs electricity, does not have battery backup. For those that have never used one, if you're sleeping and it stops, you wake up almost like you're dying, you're smothering. The problem that I have is I stop breathing during the evenings when I sleep. I don't know it. There have been a couple of times that I almost didn't wake up. It is a very uncomfortable feeling, knowing that I couldn't sleep for those six days. One evening, I finally drove around and was able to find one room open for one evening only, which gave me a little bit of a break, that I was able to plug in and get that breathing machine and get a little sleep. Also, while I was staying home during this, I am a brittle diabetic. I ranged over the scale. I had to go to the emergency room. I knew nothing in regards to my insulin, my diet because of what was going on. Refrigeration was gone. So, you have to eat what's readily available. I mean, and there wasn't much open to be able to get anything to eat. So, that's another problem. You try to reach Unitil. If you can get through, you get a recording. If you can't get through, and I can tell you, I tried numerous times. You get a busy signal. I kept calling the command center. I kept being told, "Oh, it's going to be another couple of days." "Oh, it's going to be another day. It's going to be another day." Well, guess what? It ended up being six. Nobody was checking on me after I informed those supposedly in authority of my situation. I had lights eventually come around, all around me: Route 12, South Fitchburg, Winusnok Road, South Street, half of the plaza in regards to the Twin City Plaza, Kmart. I had no power. I kept telling people. Finally, I was told, "Try this number. And if you don't get through, try this number." Two different numbers to Unitil. I called. I got somebody. Very bruntly told me, "How did you get this number? You are not supposed to be calling here." I says, "Well, it was given to me." "Well, you could talk to customer service. I'll put you through." "Well, we can't prioritize anything, even if you have medical problems." They can't prioritize anything. I says, "Okay." Tried back the following day because I was still out of power. Guess what? Both of those numbers were disconnected. I was the only one, I was told, that used it, shouldn't have used it, and they shut them off so nobody else could use them. What's that tell you about a company? Do they care? No. They don't care about us. They only care about themselves and their bottom line. Another thing they said in a paper headlines: Customers won't feel the cost to what they went through. For those that have seen their bill and looked at it, hopefully, there's a little notation that says, right on your bill, it says, "Attention, electric customers. For electric consumption on and after January 1, 2009, electric rates will increase," I'll tell you, "the rate by .00849 for all residential customer classes due to an increase in recoverable operating costs." Well, what's that tell you? One more time, it's the bottom buck. It's not us. Supposedly, we weren't going to feel what they had to put out in dollars, but yet, they're going to recover by making us pay more. This company does not belong in business, never mind in Fitchburg. Now, in regards to our other responding departments, they were very friendly. Really couldn't help out. I went to one of the centers to see if I could stay there. Based on my situations, there were a few things they could accommodate, but there was no way I was going to be able to stay there. So, I had to tough it out at home, like many people had to. A lot of people didn't know about those centers. People didn't have radios because they didn't have batteries. I went shopping around anywhere I could find. I even ran into Mr. Hayes, who was doing the same thing. We were told they were coming. Finally, I gave up because the delivery didn't come in. So, I didn't know about the centers to begin with. I didn't know who to call, other than guessing. I mean, more information, better communication, more listening and understanding is needed. For those that are aware of it, we did lose power not too long ago, within the last week. Again, I woke up smothering because my machine was not working. I placed three phone calls, one trying to get Unitil. Again, didn't work. I even called the North Street Fire Department. I got a recording, said, "Sorry, no one's here to answer your phone call. Leave a message, and when we get that message, we will call you back." I called the police station, talked to a female dispatcher. "Oh, let me guess, you're out of power." "Yes, where are you?" "I was on 25 Long Edge Avenue." "Well, there was some kind of an overload on the circuits or something, and we lost power citywide." "But we haven't called Unitil yet. We're going to do that." "Well, I'm sorry." The first phone call that says they're out of power, there should have been a call made to Unitil. There should have also been phone calls made to anybody else that needed to know, especially after what we just went through. I'm sorry, gentlemen and ma'am, but you dropped the ball and you just let it roll. I did not see, other than some volunteering and trying to give the hours that you could give, some of yous, but you failed. And it's time that you step forward, take the bow by the horns, get rid of Unitil, and serve the city the way it should be served. Thank you.
My name is Joanne Lucia, and I live on Sunrise Ave. in West Fitchburg. I've lived there since 1960. And from what I can see, years ago, Unitil and Verizon would come around and trim the trees around the wires. I tell you, I have not seen anyone trim the trees in many years. We've had to do it ourselves. If we call Unitil or Verizon, they would tell us, "It's not our problem. It's your problem. It's your tree." Okay? Then, why do we pay taxes? Taxes are included to help maintain the wires so that when we have storms like this, we wouldn't be in this particular problem. And I did call the radio one day after the storm, and I did mention it to them, and they said, "Well, we'll discuss it." Well, one was blaming one, one was blaming the other, and then Comcast come in the picture. So, I mean, everyone should try to equal out their jobs as far as what they should do. We should all pitch in together, like President Obama says. The Unitil should pitch in, Verizon, Comcast, anything that has to do with the wires that would hurt my living in my home. I have had to see a doctor because I've got a bad back problem. And during the storm, it was like 11:30 on December 11, that we lost electricity. A tree came over on my backyard and onto my deck in my house, and it was quite a bang. However, I didn't have that much damage. But to get all these trees and limbs and wood, et cetera, to be taken off is going to cost me money, which it probably would have in the first place. However, I lost the electricity, and my house got down to 20 degrees. I went down to my son's and stayed overnight. I'd come up during the day to see if there was any electricity. I did call Unitil, and I got a recording, and they said, "Call back at 4:30. We'll have an update for you." And I did this every day, and I never got an update. So, in the meantime, finally, on December 17, I was able to purchase a generator, which was very costly. And then, I had to purchase a special plug that had to be used, which was like another $70. So, that's 850 plus 70. And then, it was $25 a day for gasoline for me to pour into the generator to use. So, the expense was quite a lot. And then, I had to have an electrician professionally hook up my generator, et cetera. And my neighbor did come over and put it on for me, and finally, when the electricity came on, December 24, it went off again for like six more hours. So, you know, I feel bad for anyone that's ill or needs a lot of help. I didn't know either there was help to sleep overnight, but I did go down to my son's. But I just hope that everyone can work together and at least try to absorb some of the cost. I wish FEMA would help us as individuals, because I lost my freezer, all the food in my freezer, and my refrigerator upstairs. my freezer and my refrigerator upstairs. So that, again, it's cost me $1,500. I don't have that kind of money, but we have to, you know, pay little by little. So I'm just hoping that something can be resolved with the city, Verizon, Comcast, and Unitil in a, in a nice way. If you use, use, lose Unitil, I don't know who you're going to get. And Unitil, you know, is Pittsburgh Gas and Electric when we used to first had, had electricity. So I wish the best, that everybody could work together to absorb some of this, and maybe we could get something from FEMA as a family, not as a business. You know, businesses are supposed to get a certain percentage from FEMA. As a homeowner, I could use a little bit too, and I'm not asking for a lot. But like I say, I just wish the best for everyone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betsy Sharon. I live at 936 Westminster Hill Road, and we were without power for 12 days. I had just done my grocery shopping. I lost all of the meat that I had purchased. $87 down the drain, thrown in the trash. I am currently unemployed. I don't receive that much for an unemployment check. My husband is totally disabled. Thank God we have a fireplace in our house. And I'm able to use a chainsaw, though I take Coumadin, so I was taking my life in my hands by cutting wood, because if I would have cut myself, I would have bled to death. My husband, like I said, is on oxygen. Thankfully, it is a tank, and it's not an electric-generated oxygen unit. But for 12 days, cooking on a, on a wood stove, trying to, to give my husband some nourishing food, we were both so filled with anxiety, we were in tears. When we woke up that morning, Sunrise Ave, and Joanne Lucia is my neighbor down the street, that whole street was covered with trees. And the neighbors, Joanne, myself, and all of the people on Sunrise Ave, we got out there with chainsaws. One individual, who's a professional tree trimmer, he got out there and he cut every single tree on that street that was down and it was blocking the roadway. Heaven forbid, there would have been a medical emergency, because an ambulance wouldn't have gotten through, and the person probably would have died. We piled everything over on the sidewalk neatly, and we waited, and we waited, and nothing happened for 12 days. Then we, oh, then the electricity comes on. Great. Most of us haven't had a decent shower, only sponge baths for the entire time, and we're thinking, oh, great, the power's on. I can't wait for some hot water to take a shower. Just getting into the shower, poof, the electricity goes out. Another tease, the power is off for six hours. It comes back on again. It's on for an additional five, and then it goes out again. Let's face it, people are not going to want to move to Pittsburgh with Unitil as their electrical provider. Because my husband and I, as soon as the real estate market turns around, we are out of dodge, because this is ridiculous. They don't trim the trees like they used to. Years ago, I can say with all honesty, it was at least five years ago, it may be as many as 10, where they sent out these forms for permission to trim the trees that were interfering with the lines. Well, Ospeland, they came up, they trimmed the trees this much at the time. Well, now, that limb that they cut off 12 inches is back into the branches again with nothing. I, I can't get out there and cut it. It's up too high. But I'll tell you, if I could, I'd be out there with a chainsaw, and I'd cut all those damn tree limbs away. But let's face it, you're not going to get any industry to move into Pittsburgh to create jobs for the population because of the high electric bills. Nobody wants to come here with a business. It's just way too high. And that's the only way you're going to get rid of Unitil and get some business into Pittsburgh. Because let's face it, ladies and gentlemen, they simply, Unitil simply does not deliver. Thank you.
My name is Douglas Nunn, and I live here in Pittsburgh, and I have a different story to tell about the storm. Unlike most people, I had a positive experience through the storm, and I want to share some of it and some of my observations. And I went down to the senior center on Friday afternoon to help volunteer during the ice storm. And I was able to watch firsthand as the senior center morphed from a warming center to a shelter, and then after the next several days, from a single shelter to a command center for several shelters. At what, at one time during the storm, we had the senior center, the Memorial High School, and Ryan Gold, all operating as emergency shelters. And having worked in this Pittsburgh shelter system over the weekend and into the following week, it was some of the most difficult and demanding work, and even dirty work, that I've done in a good, long time. I'm a software engineer by trade, and it's been a long time since I've had to get my hands dirty. But the volunteer work that I did do was one of the most rewarding experiences that I've had. And I don't, for the first couple of days in the shelter system, some of the things that I was doing is I was collecting materials and goods to keep the shelters running. This included purchasing of food and medicines and supplies, which were not readily available for the first couple of nights. As donations started coming in, things, things began to happen. But for the first 24 to 48 hours, I was buying diapers. I bought formula. You know, these are the types of things that would be sent out. I bought bags of flowers, and, and I didn't know this before this, but number 10 beans, industrial beans, or huge cans of beans. But during this time that I was a volunteer, I had an opportunity to see and work alongside some of the very best people in our community. But I want to share with you some of the things that I felt need answers to. And I don't raise these as a criticism. I raise these as things that need to be addressed. And I have to say this again, the shelter system here in Pittsburgh during the ice storm wasn't perfect, but my God, it was good. And it's especially good for this community. This is not the most affluent community in our Commonwealth. And I'm not originally from Pittsburgh. I have lived in Washington DC. I grew up in Nova Scotia, I've lived in Florida, I've lived in North Carolina, and I've lived in affluent communities. And the quality of the people that came and worked at those shelters and made it happen is something we all should be proud of. So when I talk about some of these questions I want to raise to be answered later, please, I want you all to know that this is not a negative critique. On the contrary, this is to make something that was very good even better. So the first question I have is, who's responsible for setting up the shelters, managing the shelters, and the decommissioning of the emergency shelters during and after the ice storm? Okay, this is an important question to be answered going forward, because there were at various times in the shelter, you know, questions of who's in charge. And this happened especially during shift changes, and as this emergency extended longer than people foresaw, immediately, after the first 24 to 48 hours and the response from Unitil, this incident started to be extended more and more, and people were looking for relief. The first responders, the people that went down there immediately and started this process, and it speaks very highly of all the people who were there and that were involved, that these questions at the time were sorted out with a minimum of friction. I know that there was some friction between people, but they were sorted out. But that's an important question, and I would recommend that as planning happens, that some sort of blended team of volunteers and staff are in place that could initiate a 24-hour shelter system. And that 24-hour shelter system would be the template. If an incident extended, and I'll give you an example, if there was a hazardous spill on Route 2, and you had to move several communities away from Route 2, you may have the need to set up a shelter system. It's not just ice storms or hurricanes, but there's a variety of reasons that I could think of, that Pittsburgh needs a team in place to take care of that. During the state of emergency, I experienced, or I met, a lot of what I would call high-functioning volunteers. These are people who came down to the shelter, who gave themselves, and, and these are people, when I talk about high-functioning volunteers, I talk about people with very specific skills and that are useful in running emergency shelters. These are people that are at a place in their professional life when they can, they can leave work obligations behind and donate their time and their talent. The clearest example of these were the doctors and the nurses that came down and helped volunteering at the center. But at the shelters, we also had, and I forget the gentleman's name, but he was a phone technician, and he was desperately needed, and he was put to work setting up lines and providing systems. The culinary staff from the Monctuset Community College, and I hope I got that right, fantastic group of people, my God. These people spent 12, 14-hour days making sure people were fed. These, and not just fed, it's more than, they made sure things were clean and sanitized, that there was no germs or diseases, running these shelters the way they were run. We had the most vulnerable people in our community. We had elderly, we had sick, we had children, you know, and these people made sure that it wasn't just food and hot food, that everything was clean and organized and sanitized, and they really did a marvelous job. And we owe a huge debt of gratitude to all these people, you know, but we also need to figure out a way to identify these people that I would call a high-functioning volunteer that have very specific skills in our community, and that would be willing to volunteer if something like this happens again. And that's a question I have, is how do we find and identify in our community these types of people? There's a purchasing system that needs to be in place for emergencies. When I arrived at the senior center on Friday, I found the most powerful four words that I could ask is, what do you need? All right? And over a period of the next several days, I purchased several hundred dollars of goods and, you know, for the shelter, and the flower I mentioned, the beans. I purchased distilled water. I purchased medications. I purchased diapers and formulas, cleaning products. I purchased medication for people. And at the time, I was more than happy to do this in my community. It's not often you get to feed and contribute, like feed people in your community. It's a good feeling to be able to contribute and give back, and that's something we can't lose sight of. Now, I handed in these receipts, and whether I got reimbursed, it's inconsequential, but there has to be agents in the community that have purchasing authority when a state of emergency is declared. And amongst the council and the mayor and everybody involved in emergency services, you guys can best determine who are those types of people. But there were moments where there was a definite need, and either there was a lack of communication, or there wasn't a purchasing agent available that could authorize. There was confusions about letters I brought. I would mention one thing, though. I would go down to the Market Basket, and, and there's, there's three people that I'd like to mention. I went down, and I believe it's Kent Warner, who's the manager at the Market Basket, was absolutely wonderful. On Friday night and Saturday, when I talked to him, I said, I'm a volunteer, I'm here purchasing stuff for the shelter, is there anything you can donate? He donated eight flats of water the first night, and I think it was 16 flats the next night. And they were trying to sort out purchasing and letters at BJ's, and I believe it's Barbara Cognell, I don't know if I got her name right. The manager at BJ's sent me back to the shelter on Saturday with several hundred dollars worth of baked goods that was already destined for food pantries. And she turned it over to the shelter, the pantries weren't able to pick it up. But that, in combination with the work with the culinary group at Monctuset, or for Monctuset, was a big help. And then CVS Pharmacy was very, very helpful. But the point being is that a purchasing system needs to be in place. There's a series of events, there's a series of lessons that have to be captured, things that happen in these shelters, how to keep an accurate registry for shelter visitors. We had people coming for meals, we had people staying overnight. You know, part of the emergency management director, whoever the city appoints, I know, I think it was the retired emergency management director. But, you know, the idea of the registry system, also a registrist, registry system for volunteers, as I mentioned before in our community. How to activate local resources. Highland Nursing Home is a great example. They provide laundry services, and sheets, or the blankets were being washed up there. There were several iterations where all the blankets were taken up and washed. But resources like that, food stuffs in the school system. There was no school Monday or Tuesday. There were food stuffs that may have been available, you know, if they were gotten to soon enough. So there's resources like that in our community that if an emergency hits, there should be a way to identify what they are. This next one is a tricky one. There has to be an appropriate security infrastructure. And I'm going to raise some questions, and I also have to say, before I talk about this, the cops that I met at that shelter, it was, it's my belief that that shelter at the senior center on Friday and Saturday was the safest place in America. It really was. The beat cops at the door knew every person or every character that was coming in that door, and they made sure people were safe. And, and the reason I say that is that it really was reassuring to see these people in our community doing such a great job. We hear complaints, we hear about problems, but we really, people need to understand the, the talent that was there, making sure that the people in that shelter were going to be okay. So, but the question raised is, how do we deal with people in our community who are convicted felons, or in halfway homes, or registered sex offenders? You know, are people in our community permitted in these shelters? And what would emergency shelters do? I mean, there is part of our population that lives here in Pittsburgh. You know, when you bring everybody in Pittsburgh into these shelters, you have to understand some of these questions and the nuances around them. So through planning, you know, some of those questions can be sorted through. And I raise that now, so in the future, more definitive answers. The cops really did a good job. They segregated some of the families, they made sure the families and the kids were safe. They really did a good job with, working with the National Guard to make sure people were safe, that people's belongings were safe. And I can't emphasize that enough, but a great job, I think, they did. And then finally, if there is a need in our community for an extended shelter system, I know we have relationships with the communities around us, and we're one of the larger cities, but Pittsburgh may be able to offer to smaller communities a shelter system. So if you look for monies and investments from MEMA or FEMA, is there any way Pittsburgh could be the host for a shelter system in our community? There's just a few points I have to make. Well, this next one's kind of important. There was a gap at the shelter, the first night especially, in what medical services were available and what was needed. I went to Lemonster's Hospital, and I got two reclining chairs and two chairs from the maternity ward, because there were people with special needs. There were, there were very large people, extremely obese people, that couldn't sleep in those cots, who had very special needs. Lemonster couldn't keep them at the hospital because they're not medically ill. They couldn't really come to the shelter, because the shelter didn't have the facilities or the capability to give the, the care that those people needed. And when I talk about the care, some of them, it's, some of the people that were extremely obese have special equipment at their house to get on and off the toilet, or special beds that they can get in and out of their beds, they have problems with their joints and their legs. We, there was a time where volunteers there were trying to help these men and women on and off the toilet, and they got injured. So the reason I raise that, there is a gap between what services the hospital can offer and what special needs or medical needs a shelter would need. And we saw those, and we had to work through those. I felt like Lemonster did dump people on us, but in all fairness to them, these are people that had unusual needs that probably the hospital couldn't service. But that's a debate that hopefully you guys in the emergency management team can pick up, you know, of making sure people with MR, we had families with autistic kids, we had people with MR, we had one lady who was extremely overweight in the middle of the night screaming for a sponge bath, you know, and those are things, as we think through what we experience, how do we learn the lessons to take away from it? The last point I have to make about this... The last point I have to make about this is historical pictures. There were a lot of really good things that happened in the shelter. And there was a need, and I understand a need in the middle of an incident, to make sure that public information is disseminated in a proper way. But in the Fitchburg Historical Society, someone should be designated to take pictures of what happened so we don't lose that history. There were a lot of really good things that happened in those shelters that we may have lost. I hope some people took pictures. But there were a lot of good stories there that Fitchburg came together and took care of their own. Finally, I'd like to say a few words about the elected officials. And I got to meet just about everyone that was around. I met Steve DiNatali. I met the new senator, Jen Flannigan. I met the mayor, Joel Caddy, Annie. But people in Fitchburg need to know that these people were there on your behalf. If anybody ever questioned Stephen DiNatali's ability to speak truth to power, you should strike up a conversation with him about Unitil. Because, dear God, what a loud voice he had. And he was advocating your needs to the people that needed to hear it. And I raise that because I owe no allegiance to him. I owe no allegiance to any of you. But people need to know that your elected officials were out there fighting for you, swinging away. And, you know, all the elected officials that I met were dialed in and focused. We have to remember that you guys don't necessarily have the capability to solve all of our problems. And as a community, we need to understand that. We need to remember, for you guys on the stage, this is pretty much a part-time job. This is not your full-time occupation. And the mayor, even the city staff, in not all situations can we take care, you know, can we expect our government to take care of ourselves? We have a responsibility to step up to the plate. And I want to let people know that what I saw of my elected officials pleased me, that they were fighting on our behalf, trying to get things sorted. I already said, there was last couple of points, but I do want to say this. There are two people I'd like to mention that did an absolutely outstanding job. That we have no Katrina-like stories in Fitchburg. We have no old people that died. We don't have any young kids that got injured or hurt because of the people I'm about to mention. And I have to say Joel Caddy and the work that I saw him do on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Monday when I was there, and it's Tuesday, was absolutely fantastic. His skills as a community organizer and a leader, this city needs to appreciate what he was able to do. I had friction with Joel. I didn't necessarily agree with him all the time. It's tough. I come, I'm part of Fitchburg. I've lived here for six, seven years now. But I didn't grow up here in Fitchburg. People don't know me too well. They don't know my skill sets and where I come from. But Joel was absolutely amazing. And his ability to tap the right resources was just phenomenal. And I think you should turn and talk to him and almost, you know, inquiring minds want to know. But you need to get from him, his experience for those days, to work on a better shelter system, to improve the shelter system that we had. Finally, the last person I want to mention was Dottie McNamara. She works at the Board of Health. She did an incredible job making sure that there was medical staff, volunteers, nurses, and doctors. We, and I can't reiterate this enough, we had the most vulnerable people in our community. We had elderly people that could die from a common cold with us. We had people on machines. And she was tireless in the work that she did to make sure that we had the right staff at the various locations. And, you know, we have a lot to complain about with our government. But this was a case where we had elected officials and we had our public employees really looking out for us and taking care of us. As for myself, my next steps, I've already started them. I've gotten a hold of MEMA, and I've gotten a hold of FEMA. And I've already completed courses online. And I'm going to share this with the community. If you go to training.fema.gov, they offer online courses that are available to the general public. They're offered free of charge. And they're designed for people who have emergency management responsibilities or the general public. And what they are is they're training courses in understanding the National Incident Management System. After 9/11, the federal government set up this system so there's a common vocabulary, there's a common understanding on how to deal with emergencies. I knew nothing about this before my days at the shelter. And I've logged in and I've tuned in. I've completed the first course, which was an introductory course to the National Incident Management System. I completed the second course, which is yet again an introductory to the command system. And I would encourage people in Fitchburg who volunteer, people who want to contribute, there, on the FEMA website, you will find lists of how to be prepared yourself, how to be a volunteer in the case of an incident. You know, I'm sure either the mayor or the councilman can provide more information because they use some of this info, they use the Incident Management System in the Emergency Operations Center. So for myself personally, I wish I was better prepared. And I encourage other people in the community to take a look at the FEMA site. And available to you are things that you can do to make yourself more prepared. So those are my observations. If you have any questions, I can answer them now. If you have questions later, please feel free to call me. But thank you. And I thank you for having this meeting tonight.
Councilman and Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to briefly share what happened to me and my wife during this emergency. My name is Walter Oni. My wife and I live in an old farmhouse on Pearl Hill Road. We've got insulation. We've got storm windows. We've got a brand-new furnace. And we have lots of doors closed. But we have to run our thermostats at 50 degrees in order to keep our Unitil bills under $1,000 a month. The rates they charge are just staggering. We were without power for eight days. We survived because we have friends and neighbors who were willing to take us in and let us get warm for brief periods of time. And eventually, we were able to have a generator. But I think Unitil showed that it is mismanaged and that it is unworthy of the trust that you have to repose in a public utility in the way they responded to this emergency. For example, on December 13th, the Saturday after the storm, when all of us were shivering in our homes, my wife and I went to the McDonald's on John Fitch Highway at around 5:30 because they had heat and hot food. And that was one of the few places where we could find those things. Unitil's bucket trucks were parked across the street from us. Unitil talks about how they were doing everything they could to respond to this emergency. Well, where were their crews? Why weren't those crews out on the street fixing the downed wires? Why were those trucks parked in their parking lot on that night? Merely explaining that they didn't have access to utility crews from other states doesn't explain why they weren't using the resources that they had in order to solve the problem that our community was experiencing that night. That is a management problem that has got nothing to do with an act of God bringing down trees and wires. On Sunday, we spent the evening with friends in Gardner. They got several phone calls from National Grid telling them and predicting accurately that they were going to get power back that evening. And they did. I never heard from Unitil. In fact, when I tried to call Unitil's 800 number, when I got through, I got platitudes on a recording. I got told that they were doing everything they could. Well, I already knew that wasn't the case. I was told that they couldn't predict when things were going to be better. That I believed. At some point during the next week, several points, in fact, I tried calling that 800 number and was told by the phone operators that it was disconnected. How on earth is a public utility supposed to get information out to its customer base when it doesn't have its phone system working? I tried listening to the radio. The only station that I could get that had any kind of local information was WTAG. Unitil never gave them any information to be broadcast. I heard all about National Grid. I heard all about the companies down in Worcester that were fixing things. I didn't hear a single thing about what was going on in the Unitil service area. The only source of information I had was the Sentinel and Enterprise. Thank heaven, they were able to keep printing. And thank heaven, the person who distributes those newspapers every morning was able to come by and leave it in my mailbox because I wouldn't have known anything if it hadn't been for them. Lastly, like a lot of people, I got an estimated bill for December. I don't have to guess how much I'm being overcharged by that estimated bill because I'm reading my own meter. They're overcharging me roughly 28% for electricity and roughly 23% for gas. Now, they've said, in fact, they paid for a full-page advertisement in the Sentinel and Enterprise to remind us that we're not going to pay for service that we don't actually get. But what I think they're leaving out is that by booking revenue that they haven't, that they, by booking revenue now and booking expenses only when they actually incur them later, they're able to make their balance sheet, excuse me, their income statement. I have read a book on accounting once upon a time. They're able to make their income statement look better than it ought to be. And who does that benefit? Well, that benefits people who have stock options. That certainly doesn't benefit us, the rate payers, who are being asked to pay 28 or 23% more for a bill during a month when we didn't have adequate service. What I want to say in conclusion is that this company has demonstrated that they don't deserve our trust. We need somebody who will charge us reasonable rates and who will deliver the kind of service that other utility companies deliver to their customers and will stop making excuses for why they didn't do it. Thank you.
Good evening. Giancara Naces, I'm owner from City Hall Cafe. I'm very, very disappointed with the Unitil and from you. All these years, what I see, I'm working Main Street, I have only one problem. I don't do good business. Why? I pay double bill. I'm red. I pay $1,000 plus a little water bill. And I pay double money to Unitil. And I'm ready to leave from Fitchburg. That's the reason. And I don't see anything from you to do something about, to make this town better. You have to learn how to bring business in Fitchburg and how to keep the business in Fitchburg. I don't see that yet. I'm looking now for two years to move out from Main Street. I'm very, very happy there. I have beautiful customers, wonderful customers. They support me. But Unitil bill, it's too high. I can't afford it. I can't work seven days a week there just to pay my bills. Last month, I received $1,900. Couple of months ago, $2,400. So what I need from you to do, action. We have to get together. People of Fitchburg, I'm very disappointed because I see around, not too many. I tried a few years ago, do the same thing. Three, four years ago, I have meeting my restaurant to discuss about the bills we have in Fitchburg. You know how many people they come? Thirty-five people. After a couple of weeks, I did another meeting. Sixty-five, seventy. They're responsible because all the business leaving from Fitchburg. Can't afford it. So we have to get together, people and you, to work together and kick them out. I'm very disappointed from Unitil. And we pay now bills with one week or 10 days higher than last month. I used to pay 120. Now I have 170 in my house. Why? What you can do about it? Another thing I have to know, what you're going to do about the damage? I know a lot of friends right now, they spend $3,000, $4,000 for plumbing, electric, painting, carpeting, everything. So what I'd like from you to see, to get together and kick them out from Fitchburg because I see this is the biggest problem we have in Fitchburg. No business around. And I'm ready to move out if I find place. That's all I have to say. Stick together and act your now. You know that problem. I don't have to tell you anyway. But I have to see a little action from the city and from the people. I'm very disappointed with people. Nobody's here. Nobody. Why? They have to pay? They like to pay big bills? I don't understand. We should possibly be here for a place. Anyway, thank you very much. That's all I have to say. I'd like to see action against Unitil.
Hi. My name is Laura Williams, and I do want to thank all you councils for being here tonight. I know a lot of you volunteered. I know a lot of you volunteered during the time of the crisis. I was at the Senior Center. The only thing we had to the outside world was our cell phone. So we had to go there to charge it. I'm a senior. My husband's 70 years old, and I'm 67. And we were without power from the 11th of December to the 22nd. And the last two days, a loving friend down the street found out we were without. And I stayed with Annie DiMartino. I don't even know how to repay her for the warmth and the love she gave to me. My husband wouldn't stay overnight. He was afraid to leave the house because he didn't want to abandon the home because there was a lot of break-in, breaking in in the area. All over Fitchburg, so he just didn't trust to leave the house alone. So we went through a complete nightmare. I fell on the ice. I've already got two bad knees that I've been having treatment on. I broke my foot. I, I mean, it's, we went to the Senior Center to charge our phone. The first time I went there, it didn't, it seemed like it was being run real well. And Annie was there, Mr. Caddy, I can't remember who else. And we charged up our phone and everything. The second time I came back to charge our phone, we weren't able to. They wouldn't let us. And I remember asking for something hot to drink, and they couldn't even open the kitchen, so. But anyway, I wanted to see a neighbor down the street who had, was very sick and had been staying there. I wanted to see how she was doing. Her daughter was staying at her house, and she had to stay at the Senior Center. And I was very shocked to see what they were feeding her, what they were feeding them. It seemed, it looked to me like dog food, I'll tell you right now. And she was very scared. I know there were some medical people there that took care of the people. I think they did their best they can. I don't think they had a plan. I really thank the people that did do the volunteering and some of the people up here. I don't know all of them who did, were there. But I know Annie was there, and I know Caddy, Mr. Caddy was there. And I'm not sure who else. I can't tell you. But they did the best they can. I think we need a plan for a disaster like this. We've never had quite a disaster like this. We've never had quite a disaster like this. And I've lived in Pittsburgh all my life, and all my married life in the same house. And my husband was raised in that home, and he wouldn't, he would not leave that house. We were, we were without power from Thursday night, December 11th. We had flashlights and candles and wore layers of clothes, froze to death. It was just a complete nightmare. And, I didn't see or hear of anybody going around and helping the neighbors in my neighborhood, and that's something that wasn't years ago. And I had a young girl who knew one of my daughters who was calling on my cell phone when she finally found my cell phone number to see how we were doing. And that's how I got to get to Annie's house. She called Annie. And Annie called our house, and we, I went there for two days. And I just, like I said, I don't have no way to thank her, I'm sure she knew beforehand she would have. My husband would have never left the house. And I think a lot of people felt that way, too, that they, they just couldn't leave their home and leave it empty because there were prowlers going around everywhere at night. And, I don't know what else I wanted to say. There are a lot of people that I, I do want to thank for what they did. I was awfully surprised that nobody in the neighborhood went around and checked on the elderly or, you know, people that were not able to get out. I hadn't, the only time I get out of the house, I got out tonight because I was able to get into a pair of shoes I fit into because I've got a broken foot and two bad knees. I haven't been out, only to go to the doctors. I, I hear a lot of other stories that are worse than ours, but it seemed like a nightmare to me to go through this. And the, two days after our electric was on, on the 22nd, the 24th, we received a bill from Unitel. And I knew it was estimated because I keep all my bills for a couple of years. I got my last year's December bill out, was within a dollar range. So when I called them, I got a number from Annie to call, so I was able to get through, like before, a lot of other people and a friend of mine who was trying to get through for me. And all the other things. We had a tree fall on our house, we had branches and trees all over the place, we had wires falling off that we, I didn't know, I wouldn't have known unless this young girl told me. I had to get an electrician and offer Unitel to connect us, you know, none of this we knew. And my husband called the tree company, and we, I think we're the only ones in the neighborhood that did pick up our, you know, get the tree off our roof and, and out of the neighbor's yard. The tree came from the yard next door, but we are the ones that took, my husband called the company and, and took the brush out of the neighbor's yard. And we have a tree on the side of our house, too, that my husband has been, it's a dead tree, and it's in the wires. And I've talked with Dean about it. And I've talked many times to my husband house, to the city about it. And it seems to be, it's a city problem and a Unitel problem. Unitel has the wires and the dead tree, and the city doesn't want to remove it. So my husband's been, for the past 10 years, been taken down, little at a time, but whenever there's a storm, there's always a pile of brush or tree or something. And now, I'm afraid with this, all I can think of is that tree taking all the wires and coming forward. So I, I did get in touch with Dean Tran about that tree. Everything's frightening me now, just the flicker of the lights or anything like that because if you've never been through 12 days, I wasn't, I, I stayed with Annie for two, but my husband went through 12 days of freezing. Nothing to look forward to. You lost all your food, you know, in order to get warm, you had to get, find someplace. Everything was a blackout. It was nothing to look forward to. I'd be scared to death to stay in any of the centers. And so I was lucky that I was able to spend the last two days comfortable, and, and if it had gone on any longer, I was able to stay there longer. But my husband wasn't with me, and I worried about him. And, so I just tried to call Unitel and talk to them, and everybody I talked to was nasty on the phone to me. So I, finally, I got a second bill. And I did have my husband bring it. My husband called Steve and Dean Natale, Representative Dean Natale, brought the bill down to City Hall, and Annie also, I mailed to her my last year's bill. And the two bills, the woman I talked to last Saturday said, "You shouldn't have gotten two bills. What are you getting two?" I said, "You gotta see them. The gas is altogether different than the electricity from the first bill." You know, and it's from the same period, so, you know, you figure it out. You know, you can't win. The woman said to me, "I'll have a supervisor call you." She was very nice to me. She gave me her name. Nobody else would give me their name. I talked to several people at Unitel. And this woman was nice to, and, but she said, "I'll have my supervisor." I said, "What other names? Greg and Joanne." Well, that was early in the morning, and I never got a phone call. So, you know, I just about given up on Unitel and their cost. If you're gonna, if you're gonna be paying the money out, which, on top of everything else that we had to pay out for this storm and what we went through, I don't think I could live through it again.
Hi, my name is Michelle Astor, and I live at 76 Lawrence Street. And Mr. Josephs, I just want to say thank you so much for your quick response to my email. We have a city tree sitting in front of our house, which we do not want there any longer. We put in a request with the city five years ago when we bought the house, and it's still standing there. I just want to know, one question, whose job is it to cut back these trees? I really do think if these trees were cut, this disaster wouldn't have happened. And I'd also like to say, great job at shelters. Sorry, my family couldn't help. We had to actually evacuate our home. We were out of power for nine days. And hopefully, with our new generator, this will never happen again. And that's my only question. I just really want that answered. Whose job is it to take care of these trees in our city? Thank you very much.
Good evening. Lou Senegal, I live in Pittsburgh. As I kept reading the letters sending into the city, I mean, to the Pittsburgh Sentinel, about the people worried about their bills, and I didn't see any response. Well, it's, it's pretty easy to do. And depending on how many days you were out of work, I mean, out of power, you can let the people know. If you were out of power for 11 days, you only have to pay 67% of that bill. You don't have to pay that total bill, whatever the number is. And you can break it down for the whole month period, and you can let these people know, and then, especially the elderly. Because they have the most vulnerable, and you, you've got to be concerned for them because I am. The company that I work for was without power for 11 days. So the entire workforce was without pay for 11 days. That was totally unacceptable. And it was for three fuses on one pole. I told my boss I would go up and put them back in. And he, he obviously refused, but, you know, it's a simple matter to do. And you, you really got to be looking out for the elderly.
Good afternoon, councilors. Mayor Wong, my name's Dennis Tivido. I'm from Ward 3 on Hollywood Street. Doug kind of stole a lot of my steam here with his proclamation, saying we've got a lot of good things going on, but I just want to, we have a great city. We really do. Pittsburgh's an old mill town, but it's a real great city. The thing we need to do is to come up with some kind of a contingency plan. Like Doug said, we need people, citizens of Pittsburgh, councilors, and public safety people, be involved in this committee to set up contingencies for when we have a power outage or a fire disaster or some other disaster like a chemical spill, to work within the wards and come up with things to bring these people to shelters, to help the people that are in the disaster, and work together. I feel that we have a lot of good people in Pittsburgh, and we need to draft off these resources to, to be able to accomplish this. We all know that the city is in financial straits. You know, the fire department's getting smaller, the police department's getting smaller, and DPW, Public Works. I mean, these people used to take, take care of trees, take care of the streets, you know, and take care of a lot of other things. I can remember the fire department going around many years ago and shoveling out hydrants during fires, during snowstorms. You know, there's just not enough people to go around. And I realize that we're not getting reimbursed from the state, but we either have to look at either a two-and-a-half override or some other way of gaining cash flow for our city. The, during this ice storm, the EOC center was kind of a joke. I mean, I went to the central fire station, there was a small nine-and-a-half piece of paper that said "EOC" in an arrow. That's all. And unless I ran into a firefighter who showed me it was downstairs, I would have never found the place. I mean, we, we should have some sort of command center that when there is a disaster like this, and God forbid there is ever another one, that it just falls into place. I know most of you are old enough to remember the, the days back in school when we did the civil service things during the Kennedy administration, when, you know, we practiced civil defense, you know, hide under the desk, don't go in the closets. We had places in churches and schools where to go. You know, these things should be in place now. You know, there's no reason to not have this. Yeah, the Cold War's gone, but, you know, we have other natural disasters. You know, thank God we did not have a Katrina, you know, here. But these are, you know, these are the things that we have to look at. And I kind of, I ride around the city, I'm in sales, and, and I go through other communities. And I'm looking at outside contractors coming in, replacing poles. I mean, this is kind of a joke. We're an old mill town. Yeah, they started out with poles and putting the wires up in the air. But wait a minute here, you move to a different, you go to a new area of the city, where's all the utilities? They're underground. I mean, let's start thinking about this. These people who design these areas should be saying, hey, you know, along Electric Avenue, I'll give you an example, if, if the poles go down, or, or let's start trenching it out and, and lay these wires in the ground so that they're out of the way. And, you know, we're not worrying about poles and, and trees knocking down these wires. These are things we have to look at. And I know earlier in the night, some people, earlier tonight, people mentioned about, you know, not being able to get batteries and, and flashlights or whatever. I, I say shame on you for not having your own little disaster relief. I mean, you should have a flashlight ready, you should have batteries in your house, or a, or a radio that takes batteries. I mean, I think WIM did a fantastic job as far as the storm relief, giving people updates, phone numbers to call, where to go. And, you know, I just feel that they did a great job. And, you know, last but not least, I really think that we have to look at our public safety. I mean, Chief DeMuro and Chief Roy have a tough job ahead of them, working with the crews they have. I think we need more firefighters, more police officers, and I think that this would help our city quite a bit. It's just the, it's unfortunate the way the, the financial reimbursement from the state is going, but we do have to look at that. And if we're going to change the direction of having enough employees to do different things, then maybe we should be looking in the private sector. You know, eliminate the DPW and, and hire outside contractors who will be responsible to come in and work for us when we need them. You know, that would lessen the benefits you have to pay, the insurance you have to pay, and the overhead for the city. Now, these are alternative things that I feel if you have citizens of Pittsburgh along with councilors and department heads working together in committees, you could come to a, an agreement on and possibly pass something like this. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Angela Scafica, and I live at 17 Everett Street Extension in Pittsburgh. And my husband and I were without power for 14 days, and then we got back into my house till Christmas night. Unitel said the most people were out were 12 days, and that was a lie. 14 days for me, and that was a long time to be out of power. Like I say, my husband and I are elderly, and it took a lot out of us. And thank God, we went down to my son's house who had a fireplace. We all huddled in that room to keep warm. It wasn't an easy thing to do, but we did it. I called Unitel almost every day. I had the number that I actually spoke to people. There's other numbers that you can, you get a recording. And they told me that I would be getting in my house almost every day I called, the next day you'll get in. I even called Steve Natale, who tried to help me. 14 days, that's a long time. I signed the petition to get Unitel out, where Jody was up there last couple of weeks ago. I want Unitel out of there. I really do. If they're the worst, they, I understand, there's municipal utilities, we suggested. Well, if there's any way we can get Unitel out, I hope you councilors can help us out. I really do.
Hi, I'm Heidi Marama, and I live in the Clegg-on area. And I don't have anything stupendous to, to add, except that we were out of power for nine nights. It came back on the ninth night. I did better than a lot of my neighbors because I have gas heat, gas hot water. The thing, the thing I want to say is that I would also support any effort to get Unitel out of Pittsburgh because they, I didn't even try calling Unitel because I knew from previous experience that that would be useless. The one concern that I do have is about the shelter. They did do a wonderful job. I, I was there one night. I'm, I am a nurse, I'm an RN, and along about the, somewhere between the fifth and seventh day or so, when I realized that this was going to be a long haul, and the paper was asking for help at the shelters, and I imagined that the people had been running it up until that point were probably getting pretty burnt out. I thought that I should volunteer. So I did, and I, I work at a hospital, and I, I told them that, and I told them that I was willing to come in after my shift. I work 3 to 11, and I could do an overnight. And so I did that. I got to the shelter, and I did an overnight, and when it was my turn to leave, nobody had come in to relieve me. And I was told at that point that I would be risking my license if I left because I was the only nurse. And so I, I just want to say that that needs to be looked at. Organization, I was assuming that by that time, the Red Cross was running the shelter, but it was a day or two after I spent the overnight that it said in the paper that the Red Cross was finally called in to run the shelter. So I'm not sure who was running it up to that point, but I'm not in the position to risk my license or my job for a volunteer, however noble it might have been to, to want to do that. I just can't risk my license or my job. So my initial reaction to that is that that's the last time I'll volunteer to do that, at least as a nurse. I might volunteer again as a, just a citizen to do anything, but not a nurse, unless there's things in place that would protect me from that. I finally was able to leave after about an hour and a half or two hours after the time I should have left, they let me go. So it worked out okay in the end, but it was, it was disconcerting at that point.
Mr. President, members of the council, and Madam Mayor, I just very, very briefly want to reinforce the fact, I know that FATV is broadcasting that, this, this evening. It's very, very important for people to understand that next Tuesday, the 27th, at Memorial Middle School at 4:00 PM, as Councilor Joseph mentioned, is a full evidentiary hearing. You will be, you will be, there will be a stenographer present, actually, there's going to be two. If someone's not comfortable getting up and speaking in public, there'll be a room set aside for them to go in and provide their testimony. It's very, very important, if everyone is as angry as we all are, and all seem to be, you need to be there next Tuesday, in force. It's critically important. If we want a new provider in the city of Pittsburgh, then we need to come out in force next Tuesday. And, and beyond that, there'll be other hearings beyond that, but it's very important to be on record with your concerns, with your issues, with your story. And I can't urge you enough to be there next Tuesday, starting at 4 o'clock. It starts at 4:00. You can come in at 6:00 if you want. You can come in at 10:00. The DPU will be there until you're through. And if we need to, we'll have another evening to do it again. But we need you there. We need as many people, there are 28,000 customers in the city of Pittsburgh. I want to see all 28,000 at Memorial Middle School next Tuesday. Colleagues on the council, Mayor Wong, Representative DiNatali, and everybody else that came down tonight. My name's Kevin Starr, I live at four oh one Highland Ave, and I'm also the Ward Four Councilor. My perspective of this whole ordeal existed on obviously a couple of different levels, one as a resident and the other as a city councilor. As a resident, I'm a father, I have an almost two-year-old, I have a wife, we were without power for twelve days. Over the course of those twelve days, ten of those days, we spent looking at all our neighbors having power surrounding us, with the exception of my tiny little neighborhood. We had wires hanging in the street for over a week. I couldn't possibly expect the D P W to come down and take care of any of the brush or any of the trees, because they were laying on the wires. If we had any snowfall, there was no way to clear the, clear the street. We had taken care of that on our own, because there was no Unitil representative around to accompany those D P W crews to make sure that they'd be safe and that the lines were not live. Being a city councilor, though, is about ten times as frustrating, and I know I'm speaking to the choir when I look up on the stage. Over the first five days of this crisis, I probably saw about seven different Unitil representatives. Being the largest municipality that they serve, I believe eighteen thousand eight hundred customers was the number that I was given, one would think that there'd be a little more consistency with the representation towards city officials. Unfortunately, that didn't exist at all. By Wednesday, December seventeenth, after going around, doing whatever I could as a councilor, I'd had enough. I wanted power myself, and I thought being a city councilor, I'd be much better off. I didn't have to call, listen to about two hours of prompts or anything of that sort. I'd be able to speak directly to a Unitil representative. I'd much rather have been speaking to a wall. I got absolutely no answers, and I wasn't able to give any answers to any of my constituents. But by that Wednesday evening, I had gone down to the command center, and I was relieved to find out that a statement had been made public, that Unitil's goal was by Thursday, December eighteenth, ninety-five percent of the customers in Pittsburgh would have power. The only people in this city who would not have power were those that had individual issues with the connections on their home. Being optimistic, I was quite relieved, and I looked forward to the following evening. After I put my daughter to bed at eight o'clock, I spent two hours driving around the city. I drove two sections that I heard didn't have power, and they were still out. And I called friends in other areas of the city, and obviously, they were out also. Unfortunately, that really didn't shock me, because I didn't see progress during the day. The thing that bothered me the most was, in the two hours that I spent driving around Pittsburgh, I didn't see one single utility vehicle, not Unitil, or not any of the other carriers that had come into town to help. The excuse was, they didn't realize the extent of the damage to the primary lines. That statement was made that following Friday after being out for eight days. I find it very hard to believe that they didn't understand that extent, because one of the representatives that had spoken with us on Monday, the fifteenth, had said that we were going to be in for a wait because of the extent of the damage to our primary lines. So they knew then that the lines were damaged, yet they still allowed that statement to be made public. I would like to commend Unitil in one aspect. It's very clear that they had proper staffing in their billing department. It's nice to see, it's nice to see that everybody's estimated bill was delivered on time. It's clear that that's one department within their company that didn't need to call in crews from Georgia, Tennessee, Michigan, or Ohio to assist. It's clear by now that they were totally unprepared for such an emergency. They were completely unorganized, as evidenced by the amount of representatives that they sent to the command center on a daily basis. I also believe that information given to myself and other city officials in the command center was inaccurate and in some cases fraudulent. I was totally disgusted at the level of irresponsibility and allowing false hopes to be published in the print media. I set goals for myself. Individuals, my colleagues, I'm sure, set goals. But after eight days, we don't want to hear about goals for a following day. It's completely unacceptable, and my disgust continues to linger. In no way is my criticism directed towards any of the crews, whether they work for Unitil or any of the other utility providers that came in to assist us. They knew the situation that they were getting into, they knew the people that they were going to be dealing with, and they worked their tails off. One thing that I would like to make sure people understand is cleanup was incredibly difficult. I've heard people mention issues with trees. The first night of the storm, I had to ship my daughter off to Maynard, and so I had gone to my in-laws' house in Lemonster. Yes, there were plenty of crews out there, working on the lines, and following those crews were D P W. We had D P W crews that were willing to go out and start cleaning up. It's much easier to clean up if you're proactive and doing it as the crews are fixing the lines. We didn't have the crews available. I understood that, but I did not understand why we couldn't have any real communication as to when those crews were coming here. But the only accurate statement that I heard from Unitil was I had asked one of the many representatives what their goals were originally, probably about that Sunday. They said that they wanted to restore as much power to as many people as possible. I thought that was pretty admirable. They also stated that we weren't going to see crews for a few days, because they needed to go out and fix the substations. Well, by that Monday, the fifteenth, all the substations, or at least the information that was given to us, all the substations were fixed. We still did not see the crews. I do believe that they did not present accurate information as to how many crews were in the city, and that just made our job that much more difficult. Now, with any crisis, there are always positive stories, whether it was the constituents that I have on Ashby West Road that spent six hours and about fifteen people armed with chainsaws to cut their way out to be able to get downtown, get away from their houses. Whether it was my neighbor that lived behind me on Lincoln Street, one of the people who had power after day two, and allowed me to run a hundred and fifty-foot extension cord to plug in my pellet stove, so at least I could sleep in my house and be warm. The positive attitudes at the command center, all the heads of the city departments were remarkable. I can't say enough about the people that work for this city. The only time that I was sane during twelve days was when I walked into the command center. It all started with the mayor and everybody else. Everybody was focused to the task at hand. We made mistakes. We learned from those mistakes. Each day, you saw something change. We found out what worked for us and what didn't work, and we constantly switched on the fly. Again, I'd like to thank obviously all my colleagues up on the stage, all the depart, everybody who works for the city of Pittsburgh, and especially the residents for their tolerance during this time. It was very frustrating for me personally, and I'm sure I speak for the others up on stage, that we couldn't give them any answers when their power was coming back. I'm glad we had this opportunity to share some of our thoughts. I'm glad others have the chance to address us with their concerns, and needless to say, I look forward to hearing more next Tuesday in front of the Department of Public Utilities. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheri DiPisquale, and I'm a resident of Stony Brook Village. We were without power for eight days. We were actually pretty fortunate, because we have a gas-fired wood stove and a gas-fired hot water heater, so we bought an inverter and we were able to get our hot water heater approved draft. So our house was probably sixty degrees tops, which was pretty comfortable compared to other people's houses. And it was frustrating, every day I go to work, I drive by the substation on Rinj Road, and frequently, there were workers there, and I would stop, you know, hey, we're up here on Rinj Road, off of Rinj Road, what do you think? Oh, later today, you guys left power later today. That went on for four days. So I was on a roller coaster ride every single day, thinking, all right, they told me we want to get power back today, and I drive home from work, and as soon as I got past Country Pizza, started going up Rinj Road Black. To make matters worse, we have a family-owned property on Cliff Street. We are in the process of trying to sell it. My husband and I have taken over the electric bills for the first and second floor, so we can show it. About two days into the power outage, we received a bill for the first floor. Set it aside, I'll pay it later, you know, I've got other things to do right now, I don't have a life by which to write a check. Two days after that, maybe three days, I got a demand notice in the mail. That was frustrating enough, but waited, we got power back on Friday, the nineteenth. On the twenty-second, I wrote out checks. Needed to make copies, because we need to make sure we get reimbursed once the house does finally sell, so I sent out checks on the twenty-second. Christmas Eve Day, I was let go early from work, a nice employer. I get home, my husband brings down this piece of paper to me. Unitil actually faxed a bill to my home on Christmas Eve morning. I thought my head was going to pop off my shoulders. Got on the phone, actually finally got through this time, one other time when I was trying to get a status, I was on hold for an hour and twelve minutes, and no one ever picked up. This particular time, I did get ahold of someone, and I apologized upfront for my attitude, because I was just steaming. I asked to speak to a supervisor, she put me on hold, came back and said, well, I spoke with the billing department, and I don't understand why they faxed you that today, because we show that as being paid. So it just goes to prove the total incompetence across the entire company. I disagree that they have a good staff in the billing department, this just goes to prove it. So if we can do anything to get rid of them, my estimated bill, by the way, we actually have a hot tub in our backyard, which we aren't running this winter, because we can't afford it. So they estimated our bill based on last year's bill, when we did have the hot tub running, so they overcharged me by six hundred kilowatt-hours. So I told them to send me a new bill. Oh, we can do that, because the day after they sent out your bill, they actually came by and did a reading. Okay, why did you have to get the bill out the day before, if you knew the crews were going to be out the following day to do a reading? Frustration level is through the roof, I still haven't gotten over it, I don't think I will until we see them out the door. My husband and I were out plowing one afternoon, going down John Fitch Highway, and we both said, you know, I want to be in the parking lot when the sign for Unitil comes down and a new sign goes up for someone else. I hope all the residents in Pittsburgh will join us. Thank you.
My name is Chris Bell, I live on Boxwood Circle here in Pittsburgh, and tonight, my criticism isn't about Unitil, even though I do have my own story about them and their incompetence. My story is the dereliction of duty by the mayor. What I mean is, shortly after the power went out, she's over at Cocoa Keys for the grand opening, at a hotel that is throwing out storm victims, because they have to make room for people who had reservations. She did not pressure the hotel to put off the grand opening. It would have been very easy to do that. That is her job, she is to lead this city, she should have put the pressure there. Second place where she's derelict in duty. She refused to put pressure on Unitil, from my observation. I have an email backing me up, stating that we should not be pointing fingers. Well, I'm sorry, but if Unitil is supposed to do the maintenance on the trees, aren't they supposed to be held accountable? It was not until after Representative DiNatali came out and said that we're going to hold statewide hearings on this, it was about two days later, she came back and said, yes, we're going to hold statewide hearings on this. To add to this incompetence, she then put also the pressure on you, the city council, to have these hearings. She is the mayor. She needs to lead. I have not seen leadership in the one year. My seventeen-year-old son, who's an Eagle Scout, can go through your budget and make budget cuts, just like she has, but he can lead a Boy Scout troop? I have not seen any leadership from her. In the military, dereliction of duty is a court martial offense. In corporate America, you can be fired. If you're the President of the United States, or you're the governor, you can be impeached. Mayor, it is time for you to stand up. Are you going to represent the seventy-five percent of the people who voted for you and hold Unitil accountable, or are you just talking on your campaign promise of change? We deserve a mayor who is going to be held accountable, who is going to hold these public utilities companies accountable. She shut down the emergency center on Tuesday, the twenty-third. West Pittsburgh and Clegg Horn were without power that night when she shut it down. Mayor, did you have power that night? Because my neighborhood did not. I'm sorry. Christmas Eve, we lost power again. We were told to call Unitil, but we all know how useless that was. Christmas morning, I'm preparing to start cooking for guests. I lost power. I was forced once again to call Unitil. I'm sorry, but if she is the mayor, she needs to lead and be held accountable. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. My name is Mary Lottz, I live on Pearl Hill Road in Pittsburgh. We were without power for eight days. However, we soldiered through probably better than most of the people that I've heard today, who had and provided very compelling stories about their days in cold homes and at shelters. I have signed the petition online, so I'm presuming that that's all part and parcel of the one petition. I will be at next Tuesday's session at Memorial High School also. So I don't want to take any time tonight to talk about my problems with Unitil. The one issue that I do have to talk about is the information flow during the ice storm period, and the fact that it was very difficult to get information, certainly accurate information, but any type of information. My husband and I relied on the, is it W E I M radio exclusively for up-to-date and timely information. The newspaper was great, however, realistically, the newspaper is always going to be twenty-four hours behind, so it wasn't always the best source of information. So one of the things that I was so impressed with tonight is so many of the people who came, not only with complaints, but also with solutions. So I'd like to maybe add and share something with you that I actually just thought of while I was sitting here, on how to get some information timely out to the residents as much as possible. I loved the idea of the bullhorn, but I don't know if that would be that good in terms of people who are not home in the day, or working at night and sleeping in the day. I mean, there's never any one right answer. So why don't you just think of this, and I'll throw it out. Two things, I think, a short term, going through a crisis like this, one of the things that I was thinking of is a daily, timely insert into the Daily Sentinel and Enterprise, not only for those who get home and Enterprise, not only for those who get home delivery like I do, but also for those who could stop at a convenience store, a gas station, the grocery stores, wherever. So they would know as a matter of course that they could pick up a daily flyer that would give up-to-date information as much as possible. And the up-to-date information would not only include info that you all know, that maybe just sort of hitting the press, like when certain streets are going to get back power, really reiterating what we hear on the radio and things like that, but also reminding people, turn on your radio, these are the call numbers for your radio, 1280. A lot of people didn't even know this. They're used to living, listening to Boston radio. We were telling our neighbors, just turn on AM 1280, that's the local channel. It's the first time people even thought of turning on that or looking at it as a resource. So that's just an idea of a daily information sheet that could be a quick flyer insert, timely piece of information. Another thing is as you now start sitting back and thinking of some future plans and things like this, as we go into the future, what can we do to help this in the future? Put into the newspaper, maybe a box, a column in the newspaper, that would help people plan emergency kits. They're right, these aren't things that we thought about since 9/11 and everybody was kind of in a frenzy about emergency preparedness and what do we need to do. That's all gone by the wayside. That's gone by the wayside like the old civil defense systems. I'm sorry to say, but you know, out of sight, out of mind. So if you put in a column in the newspaper that would actually share for people, what should you have at home? A flashlight or maybe two or three batteries? Keep not just one that's in the flashlight, but several batteries in store? Keep a, this is an old term, young people with iPods don't know this, transistor radio? What's the station to put it on, whether it's the Worcester Station, whether it's the Pittsburgh Station? These are timely and informative things that people need to know about. As far as info resources, where can people go? What is the emergency phone numbers for the, I don't know what, City Hall, Fire Department, Police Station? If you have a designated number for an emergency shelter, have a card that goes in this that people can cut out of the newspaper and put with their emergency kit, so they'll know. Update this all periodically to keep it in people's minds, to keep it up front and center so people always remember it, and keeps numbers and points of contact current. So I guess that's all I really have to say. Mayor Wong, I really thought you did a very good job. And let me tell you, you are a new mayor. You are a young professional woman. I'm an old professional woman who's now retired. I know what it's like to be carrying a lot of weight on your shoulders. You've only been in the job, what, a year? This is hard work. It's a lot of hard work. Mayor Mylott Dean, not, what's his name? The one in Lemonster. All as I ever heard was Dean, Mayor Dean Mazzarella, and he had his whole act together. It's all as I turned on was the radio. Dino, 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 Dino did this, Dino did that. Dino has the trees cut down. Dino has the streets cleared up. That's fine, that's wonderful. Dino's been a mayor for 15 years and before that, he was a police department personnel. You know, we have a good mayor. We have a city council who needs to help our mayor and start addressing some of these problems. Thank you so much.
Can I just say one thing? Mayor Wong was without power. She lived in the fire station, she was out every day on the streets, helping with the sanding, and I think she did a wonderful job. This was a disaster, and I think she'll learn from us. She's one of the greatest mayors we've ever had.
Hi. Angelo Bezzol. I live on 241 Stony Brook Road. First of all, I want to apologize. I emailed some information to some councilors. I didn't have everyone's email address. Hopefully you guys share information with each other. First of all, one of the comments that somebody just made, you know, I have some more information here I'd like to present to the council, they can take it, make copies of it. We have to realize that Lemonster on Monday was looking at cleanup. We were looking at opening up more shelters. That's the big difference. A lot of times, everyone that's come up here has talked about getting rid of Unitel. It's going to be very hard to do, I'm going to be honest with you. The public utilities, very guarded industry. I can't tell you how hard it is to Google information online and get information about public utilities. You try looking up on the IEEE website, you have to be a member, which means you have to be a public utility. So it is a guarded industry. You are not going to be able to convince the Department of Public Utilities about mismanagement. That's not the way you're going to do this. As crazy as it sounds, the only way you're going to be able to get rid of them is if you can prove negligence. And by negligence, you need to take a look at the infrastructure of Pittsburgh and how it was before the storm. And by doing that, you need to get photos of telephone poles from people, present them to the DPU, and let them see what condition those poles were. They are responsible for replacing poles every year. Some of the information I sent you showed that in the next four years, they were going to replace 75 poles in Pittsburgh per year. The average pole life expectancy, and I have information here, is 30 to 40 years. We need to take a look at how many poles they've replaced over the last 30, 40 years. Okay? Some of the other information I sent you was the condition of cables. Some of them date back to the 40s and the 50s. Who is responsible for replacing those cables? What is the life expectancy? And what are the condition of the cables right now? The one thing I think you need to express to the DPU is if they're not going to get rid of Unitel, they need to fix everything that's wrong. Okay? Right on Ringe Road, there's a little substation on the left-hand side. It looks like the thing is about ready to go any day. I wouldn't be surprised if there's a big fuse in it. Those are the types of things that really need to look at if people are really serious about getting rid of them. So when I say things to the public like, "Go out in the front of your house, every pole has a number." Unitel should be able to tell you when the poles in Pittsburgh were installed and when they were replaced. If you notice, they've been going around, there's little yellow tags on all the poles now. I'm sure that they are aware that the DPU is coming around and they're going to take a look at it. Some of the poles are marked, I know somebody told me, there's a pole up by Cargzall that dated back to 1947. Those are the types of things that you need to present to the DPU because the only way that you're ever going to get rid of them is if you can prove that before the storm, they were negligent. How they handled the storm, the DPU is really not going to be interested in too much of that. They're going to be sympathetic, but it's not cause for them to get rid of the DPU. The other thing too was on December 11th, I believe, Unitel went out and purchased Granite State Gas. Somebody needs to, and I've contacted the senators, they never emailed me back, somebody needs to eventually take a look at these utility companies and find out if they can handle more debt. Because it takes a while when you buy somebody to make up that profit. Somebody needs to find out from the federal agency who's allowing the public utilities to buy up these other utilities if they can't afford to buy them. So I just want you to have this, you can make copies of it. Okay? And like I said, if there's citizens out there, I know some of them said they have not seen anybody trim trees, trimming trees and replacing poles, two things that if you bring it to the DPU, as simple as it seems, those are the things that they are going to be held accountable. And if you can prove that they weren't doing it, then you can prove that it was a public safety hazard. That's it. Thank you.
President, hey, councilors. I want to thank you for holding this forum tonight. My name is George Gantz, I'm a senior vice president with Unitel. I know I'm not a very popular man here tonight, but I am here along with several other representatives from the company, primarily to hear what the public has to say. We acknowledge the anger and frustration of those who were out of power for up to 14 days in December. We are committed to doing better. It is our hope that we can learn the lessons that we need to learn from what happened in December and then work together with the state, with other utilities, with our communities and their leaders, and with our customers to put the lessons learned to practice going forward and doing a better job. The ice storm that struck our region on December 11th was a devastating natural disaster, the most destructive ice storm in modern history. The hard-hit communities in Massachusetts and New Hampshire were declared federal and state disaster areas. The damage to the electrical infrastructure was the worst our operating personnel and outside contractors had ever seen. Some of those contract crews had worked in major hurricanes and other ice storms. In total, an estimated 1 million electric customers lost power throughout the region, including every one of Unitel's 28,000 customers in Massachusetts. I've been in the business for more than 25 years and I've never seen destruction like this. I've also never witnessed the massive response that took place across the region to recover from the ice storm. Just to put that in perspective, during the final four days, once additional resources were finally released to us by other utilities in the region, Unitel deployed more than 800 workers and more than 300 trucks in our Massachusetts service area, that's the four towns of Pittsburgh, Townsend, Lunenburg, and Ashby, working to complete the restoration of power to the final 4,000 customers. That's 800 workers, 4,000 customers, four days. That workforce is almost 10 times larger than any workforce that we've ever deployed in a previous storm. And throughout the storm restoration process, which did include two significant snowstorms, all of the company's employees and outside crews worked ceaselessly, taking time off only for eating and sleeping. And I do have to express our deepest thanks to our employees and to the outside contract personnel, and especially to the hard-working men and women of the Utility Workers Union for their heroic efforts to restore power to our customers. Nevertheless, we realize that we must do better in the future. To that end, we have engaged Bob Yardley, former chairman of the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, to help us conduct a comprehensive assessment of the storm and our response and to develop lessons learned so we can do better in the future. We have taken some immediate steps which were in place during the ice storm of January 6 to 8, quicker mobilization of crews, increased call center capabilities, a new emergency information center for improved communication with the towns. And finally, we are participating fully in the statewide review by the Department of Public Utilities, designed to ensure that all utilities in the region improve on their response to major storms in the future. We will take the necessary steps that come out of that process. We will also work with other utilities and state officials on the concept of a worst-first policy for allocation of resources in response to future storms. We at Unitel have a deep New England heritage and roots in the community. We're committed to doing a better job for our customers in the future. Thank you very much. Right, I understand, that's a common question. Estimated billing is a routine procedure for utilities of all types when they do not get a valid meter reading. In this case, we had about 4,000 customers in the month of December. We didn't get a valid meter reading. There's a computer program that calculates usage based upon number of days for the prior year, it applies that to develop a current estimate. We don't have the resources to do individualized estimates for that number of bills. So those bills did go out, and when customers have called in, we did suggest to customers that they pay what they felt was an appropriate level for that month because in the following month, there would be a true-up. It's a very unfortunate thing for customers to have to go through, you know, and I'm sorry it's been as disruptive as it is, but that's the explanation. During the outage, the meters that we rely on to provide us with the data, it's an updated system that provides the data electronically over the power lines. If the power lines are out, we can't get a valid meter read. So when we don't get a meter read, that's when an estimated bill is generated on the system. So it was for those accounts, if they were out of power on the day that they were scheduled to have their meter read, we didn't get a meter reading, that generated the estimated bill. No, it wasn't in... Right, right, that's what happened. And again, when the bills in January, as the period in January comes up, we are getting correct and accurate meter reads. It will correct for the consumption that, over that two-month period, so they will get the corrected, fully reconciled bill then in January. Thank you.
Those people that paid their bills, regardless of whether or not they deserved them, will they get compensated in the upcoming months?
Yes, their bill will be lower in the current month as a result of the reconciliation.
Okay, because I heard from a lot of people that would pay their bills regardless and, you know, make extra accommodations even if it's higher because they don't want to, you know, do anything to ruin potential credit. So they can rest easily knowing that they'll be compensated in the upcoming months?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, and thank you for coming, by the way.
I have a question for you, if it's okay? It's very quick. No, it's very quick. Before the storm, for the past nine years, you're the highest, second highest in the state with your utility bills. I wonder if you could elaborate on why that is so, and this is only added fuel to the fire. As you know, I have been a thorn in your side for many years, and I've even asked the governor to intervene on the electric rates. Can you explain to us why we are the second highest in the state? And is there a reason that most of us do not... The country. I was being nice when I said the state, because I think you've been beaten up enough. So could you elaborate just on that? It's nothing to do with the storm, and I know why we're here, but the anger and the frustration is really elevated because of it.
I cannot make a simple answer to that, but what I will say is that we will prepare, we will prepare a letter on that topic to the city council in response to that question.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I guess you guys were all waiting for me, weren't you? You're so patient, and now I want to... And I've heard talk, Mr. Gant... Say again? Yeah, my name is Hank Wicker, and you guys all know me because I'm with you practically at every meeting. And I want to address this issue about estimated bills that I've heard Mr. Gantz address, Mr. Joseph just asked him about. I got my bill this past Friday for 33 days, and I use gas and electricity. My bill for those 33 days was $810. I questioned, I called yesterday and I, Unitel, as to was that bill that I got on Friday, was it an estimate? And I was told unequivocally that it was an actual bill, and if I questioned it, they would tell me on a day-to-day basis of what I used. I hear this estimate. Now, do I have an estimated bill or do I have a true bill? Or do I have a true bill? Because I'm under the oppression by a person from Unitel told me yesterday that that was an actual bill. Now, let's talk about another issue. No, not another issue, but Unitel. Several months ago, at the senior center, there was a gathering. A number of these people were there. Unitel people were there. And during the past years, they were talking about deregulation. And every time you got a bill from Unitel, you had a flyer in there that said, "If you allow them to deregulate, you would be able to choose your own provider." So several months ago, when we had this meeting at the center, and Unitel had some people there, and I raised that question. And one of the people came to me and said, asked me for my identification and so forth, which I gave them. A couple of weeks later, I got a letter from Unitel, and it showed about four or five companies that you could get service from, your gas services from. However, you had to be a company or a business or so forth. As an individual, you were not allowed to get, to go to a private entity that they had listed. And continuously, this kind of thing goes on with Unitel. And you know, you talk about getting rid of them. You aren't going to get rid of them. They're going to soft-soap you. The DPU will play games. There's only one way you can get after them is you have to assess them for everything that they have and are using in the city and make them pay for the damages that they didn't do or didn't do replaces. Put them into bankruptcy, and you'll get them out of there. Thanks for listening.
My name is Paul Mahoney. I'm the national representative for the Utility Workers Union of America, AFL-CIO. I represent the employees who work at Unitel, National Grid, N-Star. We have 7,000 members here in the state. And I think that, I'd like to answer the question that one of the residents brought up about, he saw trucks parked when he went to McDonald's in the yard. My members were working 18 hours a day and resting for six hours. The crews that traveled in here from the other utilities would put up in a hotel for six hours a night. Most of them only got about two, three hours sleep. They were working around the clock. Restoring the power here is a very dangerous job. I was thankful that none of the citizens here were injured or died, and that none of the workers were. I think Unitel is getting a bad rap here. And I think all the utilities are in a bad shape, and it goes back to the deregulation law that was passed by the legislature in 1997. Massachusetts used to have the cheapest electricity rates in the country and the most reliable. They broke off the generation from it, and the industry has become a nightmare ever since. But I don't think Unitel is any more guilty than National Grid or N-Star. They don't cut the trees. They don't do preventive maintenance. And we don't have the proper many numbers and staffing numbers. Right now, there's a huge shortage of linemen in the country. We estimate that at about 2,500 across the nation right now. We've passed legislation with the help of Representative Denatali up at the State House to mandate mandatory staffing numbers and to mandate them to do preventive maintenance. But Unitel didn't do anything that these other utilities haven't done. National Grid had an ice storm two years ago up in Buffalo, New York, where some of the people were out for almost a month. It's what happened when we passed the deregulation law, and it has to be turned around. I know you people have talked about municipalities. I represent 14 here in the state. Municipalities don't report to the DPU. The DPU makes all public utilities report SAD and KED, and that's how long a customer was out and what line was out and for how long, and is it repeated. And that's what they assess the fines on. What happened during this storm was National Grid was fined between New York and Massachusetts 25 million last year. And that's why they kind of hoarded crews. They didn't want to let the crews go because they're worried about the DPU fines. Municipality isn't the answer. What the answer is, is to get many numbers and make them do the preventive maintenance. If I could take a shot at why the rates are so high here, the rates are mandated by the DPU. And they look at how much a company has put into the infrastructure. And what has happened is where it's a low-income area here, the DPU doesn't let the utilities recover anymore for the people that don't pay their bills. So that's why your bill is higher than the other utilities because of incurring the costs. It's just the area. And it should be spread out by the state instead of by each service provider. Right now, you're congregated in those four towns, so the numbers are skewed. It should be spread out evenly amongst the state. But I think the answer here is we need many numbers and preventive maintenance, and I think it'll help out a lot. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Fred Washington. I'm not a very good speaker, so I hope you'll be there with me a little. My lights, as you said, the electricity went out on the 11th, went out on the 11th of December due to the fact that a tree fell down on the lines and broke the lines. This isn't the first time that that happened on Butcher Avenue because I'm a dead-end street. There's only three or four houses at the end of the road. The last time it happened was a few years ago. We were out for 11 days. Now, I thought, I seen it all. This time, we're out for 13 days. The tree come across, it was laid across the road. It was eight days before the tree even got removed so I could even go out of my driveway, which was frustrating to me and my wife. If we didn't have a wood-burning stove, I don't know where we would have went. I called the non-emergency phone, and I expressed my concerns about the safety. In case something happens to me and my wife, how are we going to get out of there? Oh, too close? Better? Okay. And when I called the non-emergency, they didn't really, couldn't say much except one complaint at a time. My main concern, I wanted to get the pole out of my driveway. I wanted to get out so I can do what I had to do. Thanks for Jim Raymond, my neighbor. He helped me out. On the 17th, there was a person from Unitel come down and told me the Department of Public Works requested that they check the lines to make sure the lines were dead so they could come and remove the pole. Nothing happened there at all. So I called the Department of Public Works on the 19th, and I talked to a gentleman and told him what the situation was. The pole's in the driveway. I said, "There's a snowstorm coming." And I said, "I'm afraid, safety-wise, that the driver of that plow might get hurt. Besides, he might pull the wires off my house." Lo and behold, come about 11:30 that night, I heard the noise, and here comes the plow. He hit the pole, and he pushed the pole back entirely in my driveway. Now I had the whole pole in my driveway. But the thing is, the Department of Public Works person told me that there's nothing he can do unless he hears from his boss, John. All I wanted was that pole taken out of the road. So I didn't get my lights, like I say, turned back on until the 23rd. It was 13 days we had to go without electricity and, you know... But my question is, I never thought this would happen two times. The same tree took out two poles in that, what, 10-year span, probably? But I couldn't get an answer as to how to get that pole out of the road. So I hope in the future that somewhere we'll get some information that I can call somebody. I know I called the police. The police come down that night and said it's a safety factor. They're going to inform the proper people about the pole in the road. But what I didn't know is if this happens in the future, that who would I call to remedy the problem? Thank you very much.
I know it's not a debate, and I just don't want to engage in a debate. But just in response to what we heard about wires and tree maintenance, the restaurant that I run in Lemonster last year had bucket trucks in it all summer long with police officer crews from National Grid and bucket trucks that trimmed every tree in the city of Lemonster because National Grid was doing what they're supposed to do and making sure that the trees were trimmed around the wires in the entire city of Lemonster. So it's not, every utility company is not following what they're supposed to be doing because of manpower or because of profits or whatever it causes them not to do it. Because I saw firsthand last year, there was bucket crews and police officers in the entire city of Lemonster all summer long trimming trees around wires. And they say, "Why was Lemonster not as affected?" I think that was one of the main reasons why their electrical system wasn't as affected as Fitchburg's was because they felt they needed to do, maybe their feet were held to the fire because they'd been fined before. But they recovered from the storm a little bit quicker because they had less power outages because they had less trees that went down on the lines. And the other thing I wanted to say is as a response to this woman here that was up earlier, this gentleman over here. The heroes that came out of this storm were the people in the neighborhoods that came out with the chainsaws and helped their neighbors out. The people that came out to the shelters and helped the people out. Every time, the Hannafords, the Dunkin' Donuts, everybody that came out. When I was looking for food to feed 150 people in the shelter, and I didn't know where it was coming from, Andy would say it was manna from heaven because I would turn around, and there'd be a loaf of bread and a gallon of orange juice sitting behind me to make it through breakfast. You know, Jenny's Kitchen and her network of volunteers that brought in food every day. Monty Tech, Fitchburg State College. My parents for taking in my aunt. But I only mention them because everybody in here that didn't have power was taken in by somebody that did have power or at least offered that opportunity. And everybody was taking care of each other. I know that the chief of, the fire chief had asked me, and I know that all the councilors were asked, if they wanted to go door-to-door to the people in their ward that were elderly that needed help, that we needed to be identified to make sure that they had some help and that they were getting along in their emergencies. So there was people out there every day. The emergency center, you know, say what you want about the mayor, one of the heroes. She moved out of her house on the 12th, moved into the command center, dog and all, okay, and took care of the citizens of Fitchburg. That number that was up and running, that number was up and running the day after the storm hit. Whether you're able to get that number or not, that's another concern, and we as city officials have to look at, what did we do wrong to make sure that that number wasn't available? But that number was up and running. The emergency center was up and running. And it's the people in the neighborhoods that helped each other out that were the heroes of Fitchburg during this storm. And I want to thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? You need to come down and sign up and...
I already signed up. I already spoke.
Well, we have folks who'd like to go who haven't been. If you allow them to go first, please. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Wiley. I live on 320 Parallel Road. I've been living here for 35 years. And I've seen a lot of things come and go and things done by the Unitel. Before that, it was Gas and Light Company. And they always, up until the past few years, I think it was the last storm about 15 years ago, that I lost power for a good week. And Unitel continued with their tree cutting. And up until, I don't know, maybe seven years ago, it kind of stopped because I know they did come to my house and asked for permission to cut a tree down. Well, years went by, and I could see it coming. And there's trees growing around, the wires at my house. And I called Unitel, and the dispatcher said, "Just forget about it. We don't do that anymore." And this is what happened. We're all in a mix because the storm could have happened. Trees would have come down, but it wouldn't have been as drastic. And Unitel has been in neglect. Unitel has been in more problems with the city of Fitchburg, with overcharging. Where did that million dollars go? They overcharged the whole city of Fitchburg. I never saw it. They said it was there, but I never really saw any decrease in my bill. And as far as billing after the fact, it was an insult. They should have just forgot about billing until they had a real bill instead of sending an insult, an injury, to everybody in the city of Fitchburg because of their neglect. And as far as these letters that are in the newspaper about "we're going to do better", I just called a week ago to get a light out in front of my house. The storm has been over. Everybody's got their power back. What's going on? How long does it take? I'm up here just to put my complaint about the Unitel and whatever we can do to remedy it, whether we get rid of them or make them be more accountable to take care of a city, not only our city, but up in New Hampshire. Hampton, they want to get rid of them too. So it isn't just like they're just picking on Fitchburg. They shouldn't be in business if they can't take care of the people they're constituents. And that's all I got to say.
Hello. I have a different concern. Some of my problems haven't been resolved yet. I'm sorry. I'm Steve LeBlanc. And my mother has a home, and she's older. And we have disabled in the family and in the neighborhood. We're off Derby Street, which is off Summer down by the bank north. But a couple, leading into the story, a couple summers ago, we had a transformer which caught fire. And when the transformer on the street caught fire, we called in that there was a fire. Fortunately, one of the Unitel workers lived across the street, and the lady says, "I can have this taken care of right away." When the guys come down, they said the reason for the fire was that there's branches and brush, and vines, rather, growing around the transformer that had tangled and which had caused some sort of a problem. The transformer was immediately resolved, but the branches were never removed. Since the point, and it goes back as far back as when we used to be able to go into the office and pay the bill, I've always asked that. By the way, the entire length of the street has branches growing everywhere, in between the lines, above the lines, below the lines, to a point that there's so many branches and brush growing up there that the... brush growing up there that the streetlight comes on in July at four or five o'clock in the afternoon. Because there's so many leaves covering it, it thinks it's, the, the light sensor, it thinks it's, it thinks it's nighttime. So we, we called it in. I've walked into the office, and they said somebody will take care of it. Well, as time went on, of course, it never got take, never had been resolved. During the ice storm, some of the branches come down, which knocked lines down from some of the neighbors' homes. And we called in that we needed, that we had problems with branches. The branches are still on the lines. I even called a couple weeks ago and said, "Well, I'll climb up there and take them down." And the lady that answered the phone said, "Don't you touch them." And I, and I'm, of course, you know, I wasn't going up there, but just the fact that I said that we can't connect, we, we need the line connected back to the house. She says, "We don't do that." And I says, "I know neither can we. I can't hire an electrician." Because the electrician said that no, nobody's, can be connected in that neighborhood until the branches are removed because the branches are posing weight problems. Some of the branches that are up there are this big around that are, that are still laying across the electric wires. About two weeks ago, we had a visitor from Unitel come down the street by mistake. He was looking for someplace else. I mean, he was looking for another address for a different problem. And when he was there, I said, "By the way, I, I'd like you to take a look at the line because we have our line being strapped up so that it can at least be used, so it's not dangling to be a problem. And there's other lines that have the weight of all these branches still on them that are snapped, just laying across waiting for a catastrophe. On the corner of the street, at the end of the street, rather, there's a giant branch that's on top of the streetlight, which is kind of weighting down the streetlight that eventually the streetlight is going to come down with it." He says, "Oh, I can have that taken care of." He says, "I'm glad I came down the wrong street." He says, "I'll put it up and I'll log a call." That was two weeks ago. We've not, we've not heard or seen of anybody. So this, that problem, I mean, granted, it isn't an immediate problem that it's, that it's, that people don't have electricity, but it's posing a problem that the electricity is, is going to go again. Because even though during the storm, we did have electricity, we did take in neighbors, we took in a disabled woman who lives next door, we took in whoever we could, and we served who we could to try to help those who really needed more. I says, "I just hope to God that this line doesn't come down because even though it was dangling across the ground, I got an electrician neighbor who come up. He said, "I can temporarily strap it, but it's going to come down again because there's no way to be able to resolve this because there's branches growing throughout this." So we've been on the project of at least trying to get the branches between the lines. And the branches are on the, the trees, rather, are on the street. They're not on anybody's property. And they're, the, they're between telephone poles. They're between poles. So it isn't the, the lines going to people's home. They're all the ones that are on the poles on the streets. I mean, I just wish that I could get it resolved because everybody, when you call, is very nice. The people who answer the phones, they just tell you that they're going to, they're going to log a job or, or log a call and somebody will, will take care of it. And I figured at this point, we're a month and a half beyond the storm. I said, "It isn't needed immediately, but I need it done." So she says, "It should be done before Christmas." And she said, "If it isn't, call back." And I called back, and the, the other, the other opportunity is that I see that a lot of times the, the people from Unitel really don't have a lot of work because I see the trucks parked in back of the house over by the railroad tracks waiting for something to do. And I say that because I, because a few times during previous summers, and it was, and it's not to, to, to make fun of the guys, but the guy would be sitting out there in a truck, and after a couple hours, I'd go over, you know, make sure the guy's all right. Something's wrong. And I said, "Are you okay?" And he says, "Yeah, I'm bored out of my mind." He says, "I have to sit somewhere and wait until it gets dark enough to check streetlights because my job is to go around the neighborhoods and make sure the streetlights work." And he says, "Of course, they don't come on until it gets dark, and in July, it doesn't get dark till nine o'clock." He says, "I, he says, "I, I've been on for a few hours." And he says, "I'm just waiting for either the phone to ring for me to go to get dispatched somewhere or wait until it gets dark enough to be able to check streetlights in the neighborhoods." And I mean, I've had a few of them tell me that because when I see them out there now, I just, I just say, "Well, they're, they're just sitting out there waiting for, for some, for a call or something." I mean, I, I realize the guys all work well. They work good. The tree cutters sat across from my house every morning and had breakfast. I was trying to persuade one of them to come over and try to chop at least the ones down that were weighing down the power lines. And he says, "I can't, he says, "I'd love to, and I know there's 20 of us having breakfast before we go out for the day." He says, "But I can't go over there until Unitel assigns me the job." So I says, "Very well." But we're still in the position that I have some branches that are this big that are snapped and laying across the electric lines. And that's, that's Derby, which is off of Summer behind Bank North, that whole little neighborhood in there. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Randy Norris, and I reside at 89 Birch Street Passway, which is a dead end of a birch. Little unprepared, I caught it in the paper tonight that you guys are going to be here, so I kind of wanted to run down and be heard. And me and my family were out of power 13 days. We rode out the storm in the house. I was lucky enough to have a friend with a generator, and so we, we did that. But I'm sure you heard a lot about the tree trimming. Since I moved there, I've been going, an ongoing battle with Unitel about the power lines. If anybody's been down by the Malconee Club and looks down that road, the power line is actually growing into the tree. So when they came back to restore our power, I'm like, "You know what? Something's going to be done now, thank God." And the guy grabbed the wire, he pulled it through the woods, hung it back on the pole and left. I'm like, "What about these trees?" He goes, "Well, we've got too much to deal with now." I'm like, "I can understand that. You know, everybody needs to get power back on." So I called Unitel again, asked them, you know, told them that prior, prior storms, there was a branch that had broken. It was hanging off of the tree, which still is today. But it hangs over the power lines and extends down to the ground to where my kids could go over and touch it, and it would be a hazard. And, "Oh, well, we'll be right out there." And to this day, if anybody wants to take a ride by, it's still there. And it just upsets me that we pay so much in utilities and, and delivery fees and usage charges and things I've never even heard of before in my life. And I can't even get a, a, a branch trimmed that clearly is, is clear and present danger. Not, you know, not only to my kids, but other kids in, in the neighborhood that they don't know any better. They're going to come over and start swinging on a branch. It's fun. There was a lot of vines that are, the vines are so bad that the electrical wire that's going to the house, you know, the vine's grown through that. And yet, still no answers. And I'm, I'm hoping that you guys will get some answers. You know, today, I came home from work and I opened my electric bill and I noticed that there was an increase, which they're very deserving of, I'm sure. And just a, a quick note, that last year, in the same apartment with the same amount of people, my electric and gas combined were $325. For the month of December this year, it was $525. $160 towards electric and the rest of the day said it was gas, which I don't know how I could be burning gas if I have no electricity to run the furnace. You know, I had a kerosene heater going. So I just, I'm hoping that some of these answers. You know, a lot of, a lot of people are concerned about, you know, the bills and, and who's going to pay what and this, but you know, there's other things that I think of, like my, my, my children lost out two weeks of education. Now, that means a lot to me, especially this day and age. You know, now they're talking, we had deposits on campsites and everything else. Now everybody's trying to switch it around, but granted, it's still, you know, people don't want to hear your story. You know, they, you know, this is what it is, and that, and that's the way it's going to be. So I'm just hoping that, you know, the members of the councils, and I will be there next week, you know, that you, you guys will speak for us. You're doing, you know, a, a good job. And like I said, I wasn't very prepared for this, but there's one other comment I'd like to make that nobody really seems to bring up, but I seen it, that it really annoys me, is that the city is already struggling financially. And I see people, as I'm driving down the street, taking their branches out of their yard and throwing them out into the road, which if it falls on your property, as far as I'm concerned, that you should be responsible to clean it up yourself. You know, I, I'm driving down streets. I can't get through streets. The kids can't get off the bus. You know, there's, there's mounds, there's mounds of, of branches everywhere, which the town is trying to clean up, but people keep on adding to it. You know, and it, and it just frustrates me to see that. The other thing is that it's been over a month now since we got power back, and I still have all kinds of electrical wires and cables hanging on the corner there. That would be Unitel to come by and clean that up. No, I, I have a better chance of getting struck by lightning. All right, well, thank you for your time, and go out and help Fitchburg.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? I will try to get an answer for you, Mr. Washington, okay? I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I think it was a very informative public forum. I think the councilors and myself heard a lot of things about the city and our preparedness, about the city and our, and the way we reacted, about our utility company and their preparedness and the way they, they reacted. And hopefully, we can take that information and use that at the meeting with the Department of Public Utilities, at meetings with, with other state agencies, and at meetings within the city ourselves to improve our performance in the event that we, we have another occurrence like this. I'd like to thank everybody who came out, and if there is anybody listening who didn't get to be here tonight, who would like to speak to the council, they could certainly call myself or, or my fellow councilors, and we would be glad to listen to them. Hearing that, I will entertain a motion. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, councilors.